I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on October the 20th, 2011 at 10:00 a.m. is now called to work. Members present, Donald D. Wood and Clark, Charles McCann, President, Charles Lance, Commissioner, Thomas Rainey, Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on October the 6th, 2011 at 6:00 p.m.
Motion second. It'll be an all yes, right? Motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda, we have Sue Burton with the West Hamlin Elementary.
Welcome, Sue. Thank you all for having me again. I missed you all.
Yeah, we just talked to you and forgot about us.
School's back in. I'll be here quite often.
Y'all getting too many kids in there.
I love it. I love it. And we got good news. We're getting modular, so we can keep all of our kids. We're excited. I'm here today, first of all, to thank you all for being our business partners in education. It means so much to our kids. You've all been a tremendous help at West Hamlin, and we so appreciate it. And you know, no matter how many times I get up here, I'm still nervous, so bear with me. I would just like the audience to know that over the past three years since you've been our partner, you have placed 230 books, 200, you have given student, 230 students books that normally do not have money to purchase books at our book fair. Those students are given $10 certificates to purchase books, so sometimes they get one book, sometimes they get two, depending on what they want. Also, you've given our whole school the opportunity to experience an agriculture science lab, and that was a big opportunity for them. A lot of them, I'm sure, would never gotten to experience that had it not been for your help. And we got to see West Virginia Theater perform a play, and as you know, in this area, that's hard to get students to get to see a play. So you all have done a lot for our school, and we so appreciate it, and we hope you'll continue. And I'm here today to ask for a donation of $1,000 for our book fair. That will help 100 students, so we would appreciate it if you could help those students. And thank you for having me.
Do you have a motion to provide $1,000? Go ahead, move. I'll say. In motion, second. Again, all yes, vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Let me say thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I have my pop tabs, too. Thank you from the kids. They appreciate it so much.
They're fortunate to have you.
Thank you. I love my daughter. Love, love her. And as long as we remember that it's all for the kids, we're all good. Here's my pop tab. And we are having the contest again this year.
Yes.
We're ready. Thank you all, and I have to get back to school.
Next thing on the agenda is Larry Stutler, Lincoln E.D.A.
Welcome, Larry.
I want to thank you all for the opportunity to give you an update of your Economic Development Authority. I know our board member, Commissioner Rainey, keeps you apprised a lot of times of what some of the developments that's going on. But I think it's appropriate that I come occasionally and share with you where we're at, what's going on, and where we hope to go with it. First of all, like the lady that preceded me, I want to thank you as a commission for your support of economic development and the Economic Development Authority. As you know, you're one of our primary funders. I think it's good to start with a quote that I like from West Virginia Commerce Secretary Keith Burdette. He always starts his talks with, "I don't take myself seriously, but I take my job very seriously." And in taking that job seriously, I want to share with you some of the approaches that we are looking at now. While you're a primary funder, you've probably noticed in the last two years, that revenue is shrinking. As that revenue shrinks, we have a responsibility, and we take it very seriously, to adjust and react to that. We've been able to do that. I can report that we have cut our costs where our operating budget is significantly reduced from the past levels. Unfortunately, when you look at bad economies, you've got to look at a lot of things, and we had a microloan program that has been temporarily suspended, and at the same time, we have turned over in excess of $159,000 in bad debts for collection. That was made necessary because the bills just weren't being paid. And what that does is that prohibits new loans being made because it's a revolving loan fund. And as those monies come in, then we can loan it back out. They were not coming in, but we've taken steps to try to correct that. We've changed our accounting system from a modified cash system to an accrual system, which simply means, in my terms, it allows for us to reflect some of the assets that we have, such as the business park that the county commission graciously put in our care and responsibility. With the accrual system, we're able to reflect that on our balance sheet, and our balance sheet is healthy and growing. We continue to engage in staff training. The administrative coordinator is now trained very well on QuickBooks, Excel, and a number of programs. It continues to receive training and take on extra roles. We find that necessary as we go forward with shrinking revenues. We have to do more with less. As we look at that, you would think, then, how do you operate? Well, we don't want to let shrinking revenues affect our ability to reach out and to do our job. So to prepare for these remarks today, I refer back to the Pride and Progress edition, March 2nd of the Lincoln Journal. In that edition, I had interviewed with Sean and gave him a list of some of the things we were involved in. So I went back and reviewed that list just to personally look at, how are we doing? So in seven months, I think I can report, we're on target. We've pretty well met all the goals that I shared with Sean at the time. A lot of you were here when we received the Certified Community, or Certified Development Community status from Deputy Secretary Julian, and that was a great, a great step for us. We continue to work on the Farmland Protection Board. As E.D.A. Executive Director, I am, of course, mandated actually to be the Secretary Treasurer there, and we take it very seriously. And I've been able to have several conversations with Dr. Smith concerning not just farmland protection, but agriculture and how we can expand that in the future, and I see that too is starting to get more and more attention. Bacon Eggs and Business continues, and Harts is the next location. We're trying to get our ducks in a row and make sure we have it right. We have this for the enjoyment and the education of the communities, and we want to make sure that we fulfill that role 100 percent. Leadership Southern was an initiative that we came up with to teach and to train young business and civic leaders throughout Lincoln County. I first conceived of it as Leadership Lincoln, and then we expanded it to be Leadership Southern, to include Boone, Logan, and Mango Counties. With that geographical area, we decided that it would be good if we called it Leadership Southern, and so that has been turned over to the Quarter G Regional Development Authority to continue and to get that one off the ground. We continue, excuse me, to play a, to play a supporting role with the Hatfield McCoy Trail System. We're not front and center on it, but we do play a supporting role in that, and especially in the Ivy Branch Trail that has been decided upon. I was with Jeff Lusk a couple of weeks ago in Wheeling, and we got to have a lengthy conversation concerning trailhead location and various aspects of the trail. He's done a great job, and it's, it's great to see it coming to Lincoln County. Looking back at that Pride and Progress report, at the time, I think we had an industrial park access road approved for us out at the business park, and our board, I think wisely, decided that we weren't going to go that route. I can report that that road has been upgraded, it is finished, and we don't owe a nickel on it. We were able to do it without any obligation. We decided when we looked at the industrial access road program that it had some possibilities, or some contingencies on there that I was not comfortable with, nor was my board members'. And so that road has been upgraded, we've been able to fund it and pay for it, and we have no bills on it. We like it that way. But I want to say and quickly mention that when we talk about the things that I've shared with you so far, and we refer to the business park, make no mistake, the E.D.A. is not one-dimensional. That's not the only thing we look at. We work with other prospects around the county, and certainly we are doing that as we speak. Many times, these prospects insist that we not publicize what they're looking at or who's looking at it. That's been true for a long time. As a E.D.A., we like to tell them. We like to tell everything. Hey, look, here's what we're doing, but we can't. Lots of times, they have their own public relations people that at a particular time, they will make the announcements and so on and so forth. But we've been able to work and are working with at least a couple of prospects and working very closely with the West Virginia Development Office on that. And there's just times that you just can't make the announcements. One announcement I can make that was covered in that Pride and Progress issue was a website redesign. At the time, I was applying for a grant from the West Virginia Development Office to redesign our website. That is completed. It is launched, it is up. I invite you to look, go on LincolnEDA.com and check it out. Now, as with any website, it's not something that's going to not change. We have to change over time. I think the concept is good. The concept that we used was Naturally Lincoln, and there was a couple of reasons that I thought we could use to market Naturally Lincoln. One, we have a naturally, I'm going to say excellent location. God bless us with the location. That can't change. And Jeff Lusk and I were talking about it. We're in the middle of everything. Naturally, growth should come our way. The other part of Naturally is we have a lot of natural recreational opportunities, and so we can go a lot of ways with Naturally Lincoln and still tie it together. So that's kind of what our marketing plan is with that. I think it's an excellent site. We tried to highlight Lincoln County and put the E.D.A. a supporting role because our website is about Lincoln. It's about what this county has to offer, and we have a lot. We really do. And so I'm proud of the site. It's up and going. One new thing that I can share with you when you talk prospects is we've had a meeting recently, and I'm saying very recently, in the last week, actually last week, with the West Virginia State Police. They have expressed an interest in locating their new detachment facility at the park. We have met with them. Our board met in special, in a special meeting and voted to make them a proposal. That proposal has been written up and delivered, and they are, they are assessing that as we speak. I expect they will be getting back to us. It is a great thing for the park, for Lincoln County. One of the issues that we always look at when talking to any prospect is what's this going to do for jobs? And we're told by the state police, I'm not going to dispute them, that they now have 11 officers, and they feel like that with the new facility, in a five-year timeframe, they will get that up to 18 officers. And I understand that our office is actually a district office. We cover more than just Lincoln, so it's nice to have it here in Lincoln County. The E.D.A. board is doing everything possible to make sure they have a place here in Lincoln. If it's the business park, fine. If it's somewhere else, fine. We want them here, and we're going to try to be as accommodating and work with them as much as possible. One of the things they liked was the idea that within short time, we expect to be landing helicopters at the park. Health Net has proposed to move a, one of their helicopters here and intend at some point, would like to build a hangar and landing pad. What we would be asking them to do is to build a pad big enough that it would accommodate the state police helicopter or other visiting dignitaries and officials that may come in. So we look for them to temporarily be landing one here right away. So when you see a helicopter going over, that's Health Net, and that's Progress. And it's going to be good that it's located here. Think how much more quickly they could get to the scene of an accident or something like that. It's really a plus. My board, when they met concerning the state police, the potential of the state police moving to the park, discussed infrastructure. As the commission knows, and certainly you're being committed, you're working feverishly to extend infrastructure throughout the county. I mean, I think they're doing all they can do. Everyone's doing all they can do, but we still have that need, and it's out there in a lot of cases when you talk to a prospect, and certainly in the ones I mentioned earlier to, that's the barrier, is the infrastructure. So you have to say, how much is it going to be to get it there? That was not, that was also the case at the park and talking concerning the state police. My board, I thought, or your E.D.A. board, has shown a lot of confidence in the county and in our future, and have instructed me to make arrangements to get the sewage system built. Now, that's going to cost around $150,000 to $200,000, and I'm trying to figure out where I can come up with that money. I had told one of our engineers the other day, I can assure you, we're going to build it if we got to put it on our MasterCard. I was thinking perhaps Commissioner Rainey's is what we could use in that regard, just a thought. But in all honesty, you know, we, we have been successful at this point in trying to keep, well, stay out of debt, and that's always a good thing for an organization personally and so on and so forth. However, if it comes to that, then we're prepared to take on whatever responsibility we need to get that finished, at least finished over to a new pumping station. I am working now to try to identify funds that would be separate and apart from any debt that we may incur. One of them is a coalbed methane severance tax money that we get at the E.D.A. from the state. How that works is, and I talked with Angel Moore yesterday, who is Deputy Commerce Secretary, concerning timeframes, and she assured me there's no, you know, we've got time to get our application in, because I have it on my desk and was looking at it. It's $15,188.22, I think. And what we have to do is, the E.D.A. board has to pass an official approval of the plan is to be spent on infrastructure. It came along just in time. And once they pass it, then the county commission would have to present a resolution supporting the expenditure of those funds, and then we do the application itself. So I don't envision that taking over 30 days to do. Once the E.D.A. board makes that decision and votes on that, the use of those funds, then I'm, probably will be back, and I may, at that point, ask, in view of what we're trying to do at the park, if maybe the county commission could match it. But I'll be back to make that case at a later time. If that were the case, then we could be probably a third to a fourth of the way to getting this sewage upgrade paid for. I'm working even today with engineers that have told us they're able to find funding, so we want to know where it's at. Of course, we're going to look for grants first. That's the best thing in the world. So that basically is what we're involved in. I appreciate the time to give me an update. Do you have any immediate questions that I can answer? If I can't answer them, I can certainly try to get an answer for you.
Larry?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any private industries wanting to go into the, down at the industrial park? I know, I know we've got a lot of public entities in there, but I'm just thinking, well, maybe some, maybe some other funding's available if we had private industries going in there versus...
You're right. And to answer, no. Performance Fiber Glass, of course, is finishing their new building, which looks pretty good. But as far as a large private entity, we don't have one slated there now. I'm talking to private entities, but it's not for the business department. I wish it were. You're exactly right.
That's one of the reasons why we decided to go ahead and pursue the public consumer for that area.
Right.
It will make the industrial park much more attractive to private business.
Exactly.
One thing I'm sure we can recall, Mr. Commission, I know was involved in, a few years back, we were working to get water out there for the 911 center, and we contracted to have a great portion of the timber removed and received some $65,000 for that, and for the purpose of putting water there. But what it turned out, we were able to come up with the money to pay for the water, so that money, I believe, was still sitting there drawing interest, and I don't know what that is now, but it may be $68,000 to $70,000. So that might be something we may want to look at since that was generated for business parks, or we were still in charge of.
Exactly. That'd be great. That'd be good news. I know we have a $25,000 community participation grant also here that was written for infrastructure at the park. So it's kind of like, you know, it's like I have to do personally all the time. If you want to spend some, you've got to count your pennies and see where you're at and try to come up with the money. And I really think that we can do that. The board was absolutely impressive in their positive outlook for that park and let's go ahead at it. I think it's a great time. You would think it wouldn't be with economic challenges all around us and you're in economic development, but I'm telling you, it's an exciting time here, especially in Lincoln, because we are on the move.
Naturally.
Naturally. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is the estate of Tammy McGrady. We received a letter here from Tommy McGrady, Thomas McGrady. Said, "I, Thomas D. McGrady, husband of the late Tammy K. McGrady, do hereby ask the Lincoln County Commission to appoint me as executor and beneficiary of the estate for the following reasons. Our daughter Tara Dawn Polly is currently the executors of the estate. Tara lives in Washington State and has shown no interest in paying creditors or closing the estate. Tara's only interest after her mother's passing was to spend the money in her mother's checking account. Once the funds in the checking account were depleted, she has done nothing further and has certainly not fulfilled her duties as executors. Tammy K. McGrady passed away on June 19, 2010. 16 months have now gone by, with no interest or action by Tara Polly to resolve any claims against the estate, and these claims have now incurred interest because they have been left unpaid. I, Thomas McGrady, am requesting that I be appointed executor and beneficiary of the estate to allow me to resolve and pay off all claims against the estate, as well as close the estate in a timely manner. All the funds in the estate were paid by Thomas as alimony due to, due to mine and Tammy's separation. Thank you for speedy attention to and decision regarding this matter, Thomas D. McGrady."
And I did read and discuss it with Julia, and something needs to be done. I'd like to be able to make one more effort to contact her, but if not, we'll take actions the next meeting in November, which is the 1st of November, so something needs to be done, and we agree with that. Just like to make one more effort. She tried the phone, unable to, but we think we should make one more effort, and then we'll hold this over to the next meeting until we take something down.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, to all business, redistricting of the magistrate districts, voting precincts, and executive committees.
We've been working on this quite some time. Before we go into any further in it, I have a prepared statement that I'd just like to have read here and put in the record because I think it reflects a great deal for Lincoln County in comparison to what happened in the mid-'80s. It says, "Lincoln County 2011 summary of redistricting. Lincoln County Commission began a redistricting plan. The goal was having equal representation for all districts in compliance with the 2010 census. The commission voted to have the president of the commission to work through this process. The president, with the approval of other commissioners, held two public input meetings at the Lincoln County Courthouse in this room. During these meetings, it was determined that less than the present number of six districts were needed and desired by the citizens attending the input meetings. In addition, several issues were brought to the attention of the commission related to voting precincts. Also, a matter of reorganizing some of the precincts was discussed at this meeting. Once the input sessions were completed, I, as the president of the county commission, began to explore the work of the Lincoln County Commission that took place in the early 1980s. I located and spoke with the person who worked for the commission as a surveyor for the county. It was determined that the eight magistrate districts, according to him, would have become six districts back in the '80s, and he vividly remembered working with that. I was advised by the surveyor and others present, other present-day technology should be the tool that we use. He said, "There's no use of talking to me really other than finding out what went on. I do have files on everything I did. If you want to review them, you can, but I strongly suggest that you seek out and use the technologies available." I sought, sought out people in other surrounding counties seeking advice, how best to work through this process. I learned that most counties in West Virginia had three magistrate districts. The reasoning behind having three magistrate districts is to fully comply with the law of equal representation of elected members of the Board of Education and the County It was determined after further discussion and input from the public that three magistrate districts would be the direction I sought. Having been advised by several people, I sought the professional services of Joe Vaughn, who is here today with us again, and we appreciate you coming down, Joe, who is a certified redistricting professional. The goal I gave Joe Vaughn was to seek a population number of 7,240 people or thereabouts for each of the districts. And at the time of this process, I was informed that we must work within the census blocks. We can't just pick here and there, but you have to follow the census blocks or census tracts as we seek to equalize the districts. As we worked through this process, we determined that the present six could become three in close equalization by combining Harts and Laurel Hill, Sheridan and Carroll, Duval and Washington. It was determined that changing the identification of these districts from names to numbers would provide a better understanding of the new districts. That's where we have went from the names to the 1, 2, 3. Based upon public input, I requested Joe Vaughn to have more than one plan for public review. Working with her, we developed five plans with maps to review and study. I recommended to the commission that we select over after a period of time the three and five based upon public comments. I did not receive any comments or suggestions for Plan 1, 2, or 4, but I did receive input for Plans 3 and 5, comments input. Plans 3 and 5 were both placed on 30-day public review with a request that comments be put in writing and given to the president of the commission. As I worked through this process, the following input information was provided mostly by written comments, and I certainly appreciate those people who took time to provide the written comments. In regard to Plan 3, I received over 125 written comments, and those are on file in the commission office, in favor of Plan 3, and 20 to 30 this discussion, people coming up to me and talking, some even in these meetings. some even in these meetings and these inputs. In regard to Plan 5, I received no written comments. And I had less than 10 comments orally by people on Plan 5. Based upon the input from the public and allowing for some growth factor, I recommended Plan 3 to the commission with an additional 30 days of public review. And that concludes today. We'll finalize that today, actually, in the election. Make it Tuesday. I recommended Plan 3 to the commission with an additional 30 days for review. In addition, a public input review was conducted prior to the commission meeting with the opportunity to give written comments by means of a prepared list of questions. That was at the last meeting. We had a special meeting at 5:00 to get additional comments. As you well know, in that, I handed out a paper of some suggested questions that I thought might be pertinent to this process that we've been going through. I received two of those back. And both of them said, "Nothing else needs to change. Keep it like it is," type thing. Again, I requested that written comments be submitted within the 30 days without the public's written or oral comments. I would have recommended, and you won't understand this unless you look inside me, but I really had zeroed myself in, just like any other commissioners with any plan they might have, Plan 5. But after looking at all the comments and remarks that were made, I decided to forget what I wanted as a person and recommended Plan 3 to the commission to adopt and put on this other 30 days. So we will, at this meeting today, we will certainly be able to decide if Plan 3 is what will be for Lincoln County for the next 10 years based upon the census data of 2010. We're still working in Lincoln County to get ready for the May 212 election. It's all we do anymore is have elections. But we believe that working through this process has helped us do a better job of reaching the people as far as coming up with precincts. And we will end up with 16 at this time. And this can be adjusted. The redistricting cannot be. But the precincts can be worked on as different county clerks decide what will work in Lincoln County. But that will be our plan, is to be ready with all the public notice and making sure the precincts are changed and accommodate the people better than what they are now with more efficiency and less money expended by the Lincoln County Commission. Sean, you can have these remarks. So with that said, I will entertain a motion for the adoption of Plan 3 for the magistrate districts and also the 16 voting precincts. And what I'm in this motion is that we keep the 12 executive committees by the names that they are now, whether it be Sheridan, Carroll, Duval, Washington, Harts, Laurel Hill. That we keep those as the districts for the executive committees. So it's a three-issue vote, adopting the plan, adopting the new precinct reorganization, and maintaining the present committee districts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, is there an all yes vote?
No.
One note. Mr. Ramey, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. I declare a motion, carry it.
If I could have a minute, I'd like to read the also prepared statement into the microphone. And this is a few observations and opinions concerning this magistrate redistricting. Historically speaking, as far as I know, there's been one such undertaking prior to the current district in the process. In 1986, the Lincoln County Commission voted to change the districts by combining Union and Jefferson into other districts. Excuse me. We all know that that process was not completed as no one updated and submitted descriptive information mapping to the state or federal government. We also know that the information has been submitted to the state and federal government since that time that certified that they're still eight districts. As many of you will recall, earlier this year, I made a motion to investigate these discrepancies, but the motion did not receive a second from the commission. I also questioned at that time the accuracy of census numbers as they were applied in 1986 to the present. I was appreciative that when the Lincoln County Commission received the 2010 census numbers, they wanted to look at redistricting to comply with the law and make sure the districts were as equal as possible. I was also concerned that this process was being rushed through so that we could have it in place for the upcoming 2012 primary election. As far as I can tell, we have two years, according to West Virginia code, to complete this task after the numbers are available. This concern I had was heightened when the commission would not wait one week till I could be present to vote. I informed the Lincoln County Commission that I wouldn't be able to attend that meeting months in advance. I was further concerned when the president of the commission would not let me know which scenario the commission was considering when asked prior to the September 1, 2011 meeting. His response was, "I hate to say which one." Although on further questioning, he did say these scenarios, that there were scenarios that would preclude me from running for reelection in 2012. This was contrary to the meeting where we discussed the redistricting issue in Morgantown during our training. The particular scenario proved as all the components of effective gerrymandering. As can be evidenced by being the only scenario where as two city-elected officials are not allowed to run back for their respective offices. Ironically, after so much talk of getting qualified people to be involved in government, this commission has eliminated two officials with doctorate degrees. Although it may not have been the purpose of the redistricting to eliminate two independent-thinking individuals, I'm sure some of the people of this county and state will see it as a political move to silence your critics. As the good book says, "We will know the tree by the fruit it bears." And no matter how mean they call this process open and transparent, we know the difference between an apple and a persimmon. But this process still leaves a bitter taste in our mouths. Thank you.
All right.
The next thing on...
I do have a question. In regards to the statement that was just read, Joe, the mapping, as redistricting is done at the county level, the mapping is sent to your office at the Capitol?
Yes.
If in 1986, the county commission at that point followed all the procedural requirements, however the map was and updated at your office, does that make that plan illegal?
Well, the code actually doesn't go into providing it at the state or federal level. The biggest thing is the records here at the courthouse that every, you know, that it's on record here, that the commission went through all of the procedures as you have done this time with the postings, the public hearings, the ads in the papers, all of that. And then your final voting on it, as you're doing today with this. What would actually happen is the BASS. And I think I've discussed the BASS with you guys in the past. It's the Boundary and Annexation Survey that is sent to the county commission, unless the commission has identified another individual within your county to handle the BASS. What the BASS is, is for you to mark on these maps. It's a set of maps of your county. If there's been any annexation or political boundary changes that have taken place in your county, that you are to identify these on the maps and return them to the federal government. Even though that's not discussed in our code and should be, and we'll find out in this next session, a lot of stuff's going to go into code that actually should be there. The federal maps that are used for everyone, from the cities clear through the federal government, the federal tiger maps, which is what I use in my software and every government entity uses. Those, what has been turned in by the counties is what is reflected on those federal maps. And like I say, if you turn the BASS in that shows changes have been made, those changes will be made by the federal government. And when the next set of maps come out, like the maps that have came out for the 2010 census for everybody to use for their redistricting, should reflect every change that has been made in the counties during the interim of the 10 years between the census. But again, that is just the way the system works. But as far as our code telling the commission about the BASS and doing this and turning it into the federal government, it's not in there. It's not in our code.
One follow-up question. Is Lincoln County in a unique situation with not having the maps updated since the '80s?
No, sir. Not at all. A lot of times, and as the commissioners spoke about in when you guys were in Morgantown, the state auditor had actually asked me to come to that meeting and speak to you a lot on the BASS and different issues like that. A lot of people don't even know what they are. And any political bodies, as a commission and stuff, you've got the changing of parties at all times, you know, of the players. So they're not really aware of it. And the auditor was wanting me to come up and talk to the commissioners about the BASS and the importance of them, even though you guys are so busy with so much stuff. And you can sit and look at code all day, but there's a lot of stuff that's not in our code, but to the benefit of the county as the BASS are for redistricting. We have many, many counties that their stuff is not up to date. I will give, your county commission has been great as far as giving us up your precincts and stuff so that we could, when we digitize the counties, submit those. The only thing is the magisterials are not done through my office. I digitize your county. Well, let me take my hat off now. I'm also the redistricting analyst for the state. In my office at the State House, we digitize your precincts. Your political subdivisions, as your magisterials are, are something that has to be put on the BASS and submitted to the federal government. So if anyone comes to our office and says, "I want to see a map of the magisterials of my county," only thing I can give them is a copy of the tiger map from the federal government. And it's not even that. I mean, sometimes, for the most part, we have several counties. It's very confusing, and I hope we do get a lot of things put in the code. Until the 1960s, the magisterials in our tax districts were the same thing. And we actually have some counties, when the federal government wants their magistrate districts, they turn in their tax districts. So when they call my office and say, "Send me a copy of our magistrate districts," I'm sending them 12 tax districts because that's what they sent in on their BASS.
But that doesn't mean they had 12 magisterials.
No, it doesn't mean they had 12. That's just it.
Right.
Things are submitted incorrectly or they haven't been updated at the federal government. Things like that do happen. And we normally, we get with the county then and, as you all have done, I give big kudos to Lincoln County. You guys have worked hard, all of you as commissioners. Anybody can sit and look in the rearview mirror. Everybody's got past histories of not really understanding how something was done or procedures not followed completely through or something like that. The fact is that you, as a commission, have decided to, "Let's do it now. Let's use the new census numbers. Let's get our county on board. Let's get our county legal." Everybody has the right. You all have done great with your public hearings, even extended your 30 days into a 60-day area to give, let the people reflect. And even with the adding of the precincts that you all have done, again, you all have respected the people, communities of interest, and not creating hardships for your voters by the couple extra precincts that we have added for that purpose. Myself, all I can say is I can, you know, I work with you guys in real time. There's errors that have been made all over this state. And not necessarily errors, it can just... You can't really call them errors when our code doesn't nearly tell you what to do. There's just, like I say, there's errors that have been or things that were not done properly all over the state. But I, like I say, I respect you as a commission because you all decided, "Well, let's correct what was going on."
And with your help, I would like to say thank you. And I think the county clerk would thank you and his staff because we have sent the updated mapping system to BASS mapping. So we're going to... Yes. But we're going to have to redo that after this vote today. But Lincoln County will have updated BASS maps, unlike many of the other counties.
Exactly. And that will be wonderful because we do multiple, multiple counties that we do not have the accurate magisterials. We don't have accurate boundaries for their municipalities, cities, towns. And a lot of people don't understand, and I was real impressed with your economic development because I also work with a lot of counties. Grant money, like you say, is like the best thing in the world. With my GIS software, I can, I can get you so much data for certain areas that the same thing that the federal government, federal government uses the data I have when it comes to releasing, allocating money to cities, different things as far as grants. They look at that data to help them give that. So, you know, like I say, and as a consultant with your county, beyond what we've done right now, if you all want some data for certain areas where your park is or something that would need to be put in a grant, trust me, it would be wonderful because when the federal government for the allocation of funding looks at it and they're going to look at their data, which happens to be the same data you've got, they're going to know how accurate you are, that you all have researched it properly because they're going to use the census data just as you all would in your current applications for grant money. But more than anything else is having the boundaries correct. We have got so many towns, and even the city of Charleston that we had issues with where the BASS, where an annexation did not come in. You all know as well as I do that the allocation of funding, a lot of times, is based on population. And having the wrong population could be something as simple as not turning in annexations to the federal government. Because when those maps come out, again, the federal government, when it comes to releasing of allocating of money for grants, they're going to look at the population it says for that city in the census. And, you know, then you're in to court battles and stuff to say, you know, "But we had this area that wasn't on there." And creating a lot of problems to try to get grant money if you don't quite meet the population standards. That is, if everybody would just do what they should be doing, we wouldn't have those problems.
Just have two more quick ones.
Sure.
We've dealt with, for about a year and a half, people coming to the commission saying that the process in 1986, when it was voted on, wasn't done properly and it's not legal because of the mapping. And we've heard today a redistricting expert say that as long as the records in this courthouse indicate the process was done appropriately and legally, it is a legal plan. Those records can be found in the county clerk's office. And I would urge anyone here that has any questions to please do a look at those records. And the last thing, last question I have. It was indicated that we rushed through this process, that we had two years. Do we have two years?
Do you have two years? I can't really say you have two years because the code does not state that. What happens, and there's a lot of times that some counties do not get it done. First and foremost, first thing that's important is when the state finishes their redistricting. Because until the House and Senate districts are, have become law, which took a little bit longer this time with, you know, with the Governor Vito and the House bill, and now they're both law. Until you get that done, the counties can't really do a whole lot because they've got to make sure if they have any House or Senate lines coming through their county, that they respect those with their precincts and their magistrateal boundaries. Unless you just happen to be one of the lucky counties that doesn't get touched by any of that stuff. But again, you don't even know that's going to happen until the House and the Senate are finished. What, most counties, and here's the problem. I can't... You want to make sure that anytime you have an election, that you're, that you are in compliance with populations and stuff like that. If your county had not done what it has done now, when people file for office, I believe it's January the 6th or 9th that it will take place this coming year. If your magisterials were not in compliance, that you had your even population, which is possible because, see, the census was done in 2010. Everything was finished in 2011. You did have time to get it done. I'm not saying, you can't really say what's legal or what's not legal because with West Virginia code, a lot of, it might tell you what you need to do, but it doesn't tell you what's going to happen to you if you don't. you what's gonna happen to you if you don't. Somebody could contest it.
Let me rephrase that question. Has Lincoln County rushed this process compared to other counties doing the same thing right now?
No, sir, you have not rushed it. In fact, you all have given it more time than most counties. Like I say, you've even extended your public review to a 60-day period, as opposed to the 30 days that a lot of counties do.
And something else, do other counties put in the newspaper full-page maps?
Oh, no. And that's another thing. You guys did so much more. The code only more or less directs you to inform the public that changes are gonna be made. And some county commissions basically do that. We're making changes because basically that's all you've gotta let the public know, as far as the ad. Now, you do do the postings at the courthouse and in the districts. But as far as what you all did as your legal ads was above and beyond what, you know, you are required to do by code.
That's all I have. Thank you, Jeff.
Well, and I think that, you know, it's hard to do something like this and really get it done to meet 100% of the public. But, see, I didn't look at it that way. I looked at it and said, "Two commissioners had enough confidence in me as their president to work through this process and make it happen." And I took it very seriously. I mean, I could've, there's other ways this could've been handled. But I chose, because I've been on the commission for a number of years, and my desire for being a commissioner is to do what's best for Lincoln County. Don't mean it always happens. That's what I believe, and that's what I try to do. So I really believe that this old thing about position you take is always where you sit at the time you take the stand. And so I can understand Commissioner Vance being upset, but I did keep the lines of communication open. He did tell us that he would call in, and we had the phone set up with the extension rate of answers so he could participate in it. But I also sent emails telling him that there was either Plan III or V. So I don't like to wash the laundry in public, but I don't like the idea of Lincoln County being bashed either. So I just felt like it, that back when we did this, I didn't hear anybody say, "You're rushing, you're rushing, you're rushing." I heard a vote in a second to put me in charge of it and get the job done. And I took that as a charge, responsibility. And I was scared, really, because when I talked to this guy that was surveyor back in the mid-eighties, he said, "You have no idea what you're getting into, all these different districts, all the survey boundaries and all that." He said, "It took me a year to get it all done." But then he told me, "We've got the new technology, and of course, that certainly relieves some burden on my part." But I don't want anyone in this room, whether you agree with it or not, I just don't want you to leave here misrepresented, because, just because of a responsibility that I've carried out. Now, if something else comes up, and the commission decides they don't want me to do that, all you gotta do is tell me. But if they tell me to do something, expect me to do it. I do appreciate Joe Vaughn. I really do. She does her job and does it well. Without her, we've still been spinning wheels and trying to figure out what to do.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
In regards to redistricting, we know the process takes place on the cause of numbers. How do we, with our plan, how do we stack up in terms of the closeness of having the numbers equally represented compared to other counties with the new plan?
Okay. You are, you guys are like near the top of having, you know, your numbers, your variance. I don't have the data with me right now, and I'm involved in things.
It's less than 2% here.
Oh, yeah. You are like so close. You're, I don't have it with me.
Yeah, I think there's more than 10%.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so great.
I was thinking Canole County was 8 or 9%.
Right. Canole County is like 8 or 9%. And, you know, they're just, they could've tweaked theirs and made it a little bit better, but since they were basically almost able to just keep their magisterials as they were and still stay legal, they didn't really do anything. But like I said, you guys did so great. You know, you tried to get equal representation really close, and that was wonderful. And like I said, more than anything else, and I really want you guys to know, as a commission, they did care about the people so much as far as not creating hardships.
Exactly right. I think you did a good job.
No, not creating hardships for the voters, getting to their polling places and stuff. And, I mean, you should see my phone. President McCann, I mean, he would call me 20 times a day, "Joe, you're gonna finally answer this phone."
Yeah, sometimes he changes. Not all.
I wanna make one more comment.
Yes.
You know, just because I dissent on this vote doesn't mean I'm anti-Linkin County. It doesn't mean I'm trying to do what's bad for this county, or trying to put this county down, or give it a bad reputation or a black eye. What I'm trying to do is represent the people that I don't think are represented on this commission. And I'm sure there's some of those people here. But I love this county. I was born in this county. I practiced most all my life in this county. I take care of grandmothers and moms and babies and boys and girls, and I love every one of them. So just because I dissent on this vote doesn't mean I have anything against the people of Lincoln County. It's what my heart says needs to be done, and that's what I'm doing.
Ms. McCann?
Yes.
Is this appropriate to ask the question about executive committees now or in public comments?
We can take it now.
My question is, as you stated there, these were being approved today also. Since these haven't been on public review, this was kind of somewhat new for exactly what was being proposed there. My understanding is that they're gonna be developed to coincide with the current magisterial districts?
Well, we've changed. I'm just making a statement, we're not changing anything on the committee races.
Well, I'm just saying...
This is a clinical subdivision issue, really.
Well, but you're gonna continue to have 12 committee people in the county.
Yes. That's what the committee people asked. That's what they wanted.
Well, I'm not...
We discussed it now. We discussed it. We didn't put it on public review, part of the other. We did discuss it back in the public review, because Sheriff Horner wanted to discuss it.
Well, I understand, and I totally agree that you did discuss it, but it was never on public review to the exact...
What's the issue?
Well, whether or not that complies with the code, because the code on executive committees say that, assuming, because what I inferred, what you stated, was that, for example, Washington and Duval, that new district, number one, would be divided by the current magisterial districts. In other words, two committee people would be chosen from the current Washington district and two from Duval district. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think that what I wonder about and question is, my understanding of the law is it says when you do that, that those two divisions must be almost equal in population. And by my memory, I recall that Duval district is some 2,900 people, and Washington is some 4,300 people. And I don't know that that complies with the code.
Okay.
That's my question, whether or not the magisterial or the executive committee says it being provided, it has been approved by the committee.
What code does it say that in?
I didn't know this was gonna be on the agenda, or I can certainly share that with you. Ms. Vaughn may know it, but I can, I've looked at it before, and it says...
The information I got, you can have as many as you want.
Now, that's not what the code says. I'll share that with you. It says as equal, equal. I don't, I find that...
I don't say that on magisterial, but...
This is talking executive committees. They say that when they're divided, that they should be as equal as possible, or some terminology similar to that. And I'm just saying, a difference of 1,400 is not very equal when you're talking about a total of 7,200 in that, in those two districts, in that one district.
And if we need to address that, we certainly will.
Right. All I'm saying is that I wasn't aware that we were gonna do that today.
I just added that really as a convenience, so that people know, because I was gonna ask about it back in the session, and I thought, well, we need to tell them.
Well, I understand, and I'm glad you did. I'm just saying, since that hadn't been on review like the others had been, it wasn't something I knew or thought we were gonna do today that maybe it was gonna happen down the road. But I'm just, you know, just for the commission's information, I would want you to seek that you clarified that that's complying with the law.
Okay. With the question that has been addressed here, I'm gonna ask for a motion to strike that part of the business item of the executive committee from the vote was taken. Is there a motion to do that?
So, ma'am.
Is there a say? I'll say, based upon the request of Mr. Priestley, the executive committee will be removed from the motion that was passed earlier, and we'll address this at a separate time. And I apologize to the committee people for not being able to do that. Anything else? Is that a no, yes vote?
I don't know.
One no. Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries. No, we're not, we'll go on. We're gonna go on to business, then we'll come in public discussion.
Next thing on the agenda is Ripley Cow, green wastewater.
I wanted to spend a little time talking about Phase Four. We've, for all intents and purposes, finished the third phase of the project, which put in 24 additional systems this summer, bringing us to E2. We had a meeting on the 13th. We had our wastewater summit down at Chief Logan Conference Center, and it was to bring together people from the West Virginia DEP and the West Virginia DHHR to look both at what the project was going and how the project might lead to some changes at the state level, and then also to try to get everybody on the same page for Phase Four. Because what we found when we did Phase Three was, even though we thought both of those agencies were in agreement, when we got to the bidding thing, different people thought it should have been done in a different way. So it was a good meeting. We had 15 people there. Among the 15 were three people from the Community Wastewater Management Association. I think it was good for the state agencies to listen to their concerns. What we're looking at right now, of course, this could and probably will change, are three different things. One is there is a criteria that the community developed, and that on Thursday, the DEP people and the DHHR all agreed with. This is to be considered for a new system. And one of the things is that the home to be considered had to be occupied as of January 2011. One of the concerns was that as the government kept putting money into systems there, that there might be people who pulled trailers in, because they thought, well, we're gonna get three separate systems. They asked us to put a cutoff date. It's January 2011. The other thing was that the home had to be a permanent, full-time resident residence. It couldn't be someplace where people live part-time in one watershed and part-time in another. The third thing that we had, we had to define a little more. We had originally said that the home had to have an existing failing system. And some people thought that meant that it had to have a fully established septic system that was failing. Other people thought it meant that if you had a system where you had some straight pipes going in, or if you had septic that was just going under your trailer, that meant it was failing. So we resolved at the meeting on Thursday that a failing system could also mean somebody with an outhouse, of course, not that I don't think there are any people left that I've found in the watershed of outhouses, or a system where there wasn't a septic tank and stuff was just pounding into the house or trailer. We were out yesterday slogging around in the bad weather, trying to define some of these possibilities a little more. What I think we're gonna move toward with the next round is that we'll have five systems where we're gonna retrofit or relocate systems that were originally done in Phase One, which were in 2006 to 2010, where we had some problems because of leaking tanks or poor information. We would fix those. We'd try to do six homes for in-ground discharge, so the waste would go under the ground rather than in the creek, and we'd probably have 11 homes where we'd have direct discharge. One of the things we're gonna do different in bidding it is we're gonna bid it out in different blocks. We'll bid it out all at the same time, but I envision we'd have like one block that would deal with those five homes that would be fixed up, and maybe another two blocks that would be in-ground systems, and another two blocks, which would be direct discharge. And an installer could bid on all five of them, or could just bid on one. And I, the hope is, in the past, when we bid everything out at once, we've had small installers saying, "I just couldn't, I just can't handle 20 or 20 systems in a year-long period." So maybe if somebody's only bidding on three systems, we'll have some more, especially local people bidding on one.
Sounds good.
Yeah. The other thing that they approved was they're willing to let us use some new technologies with the understanding that if these new technologies are in-ground systems and they will belly up, we would change them to in-ground direct discharge. The last thing that I think we're gonna try, if we can figure out the logistics, they'll, they will let us do what they're calling pilot studies, and they think that we could use pilot studies as a way to get money to fund research on new alternative systems. So we're gonna try to do that. Your second page there has a list of what we're looking at now. The ones in dark at the bottom are the five from Phase One that need to be fixed. The other breakdown is, you see where it says "in-ground?" Question mark, those are the ones that we've got the GPS for and its for, and the elevation. We're still not sure if we're gonna be able to do this or not, because we've gotta do perp tests, and we've gotta do dye tests, and all those kinds of things. My hope is that by the end of the year, we're gonna have all the ones above the dark ones figured out, and that the DEP and the DHHR will be willing to sign off saying, "Yep, we accept these new technologies." We know we don't. And early in 2012, we can start bidding process. The one other thing that we've sort of got hanging is we've got a little bit of money left from Phase Three. Yesterday, we were hoping that the wise men excavating people would be able to get to the watershed. They couldn't. We're gonna bring them to the watershed and give them four homes to do a rough bid on, and then based on what that bid is, we'll make a decision whether to ask them to use some of this extra money, put in another ton with Phase Three money, or whether we'll just push everything to Phase Four. So that's where we are. Seems like we're moving forward, and it seems like there's gonna be funding.
Well, and I like this idea that you're talking about trying to pull out this cheaper technology or something, because that's gonna be the issue down the road, people fail with your Ford.
It is. I don't know about that. Okay. Thank you very much.
Next thing on the agenda is Hartz Community Center. Everything's working good with the government base today. The Corcoran Community Center, Doris, you have anything to add?
No, I didn't. I was here at the last meeting, and we had canceled our October meeting, and we'll have another one coming up the first Friday of November. But I hope that I'll have some minutes for you at that time.
Sharon, do you have anything to add on outreach?
Everything's going fine, and we'll finally get our trucks tomorrow. Thank you.
And on to cell service. This is brought over from the last meeting. Daryl, you went out in the Ranger, Branchland area, got some petitions. Would you like to present that?
Yes. I was working with Shigal Braiser, couldn't be here today. I'm not sure how many numbers she had, but myself, I collected 1,390 signatures. It reads, "The Lincoln County Commission would like your help in getting cell service to Branchland Ranger area, to ask the people to sign the petition that the commission can present these to the cell companies for possible cell towers in that area." It's just something that you guys can have a little ammo to go to the cell companies with, and maybe help us get some cell service up there in that area.
Sounds like somebody's been working pretty hard. We appreciate that, and we certainly, we look at it as a service to people, it's also provides emergency service, too, if we can get those cell services in.
Yeah, well, actually, we kinda thought maybe it'd be a good deal, especially with all the copper flash and stuff. Nobody can call 911 up in that area. So it'd be a good thing. So, it'd be a good thing. There's currently nothing, nothing up there.
What I heard you say, Sheldon, does she have some additional signatures, you think?
Yes, yes. I, I'm not sure on what number. We just, actually, those signatures were got within a week. So, there's definitely, definitely a lot of public interest in it.
We will gladly accept those and make copies if needed and send to the providers. So, do you have a chance on it?
I'll let Shigal know, and she can get that, get the dish while we're doing it, I'm sure there's a lot of them.
Appreciate it, Daryl.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda was emergency phone service pertaining to some of the other things. Mr. McCann had talked with Alan Holder. Alan couldn't be here this meeting, but he will be at the November third, but he did give me a statement to read into record. It says, "If the phone service is affected and people are not able to call out of their exchange, the nine-one-one calls are routed to another number inside that telephone exchange. For example, if a cut occurs in the cable that connects the customers in Allen Creek, calls are then routed to the Allen Creek Fire Department." This is, in fact, did occur two times this past spring. As soon as we are aware of the issue, we dispatch the local fire department to respond to their station to answer the calls. Then someone from our staff, which is the nine-one-one staff, is dispatched to that location with a radio and/or cellphone that works to answer the calls until the issue is resolved. In the event that no phone service exists, then the local fire department is asked to keep someone at the station until the service is restored. The fire department will then take information and radio it to nine-one-one for anyone that might come to the station. The media is also contacted to make that information available to the public. We have a local emergency planning committee, and this is in the plan of the committee's plan.
Thank you, Jen.
On to new business. I need a motion to approve the bills that submitted for payment.
So moved.
Motion second, and all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve appointments, bills, and settlements that submitted by Donald C. Witten, clerk.
So moved.
Motion second, and all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Marlene Cooper as administrator to the estate of Troy Clay due to the death of the current executor to this state.
So moved.
Motion second, and all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve an increment pay for the employees as prepared.
So moved.
I don't have a list in here, no, but I can get them for you.
Is that like the one time?
It's once, once a year, if we have money.
Okay.
If motion and second provided an increment pay for employees, then all yes, motion carries. I think most anyone got us fifteen hundred dollars.
That's less than on the subject of last year, more on for something. Is there anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, on the emergency cellphone service that we just talked about, I think the plan, yes, is that, you know, it all sounds good, the biggest problem is the public is not aware of that. And if we could come up with some way to get the information that Judy just talked about to the people that they know to go to the fire department or whatever, and there'll be somebody. I think that's the biggest problem, is the public out there, I know, they're not aware of this. So, if we could get something in the paper, or put some flyers out, or whatever, to the people, so they'll know where to go.
Well, and we'll share that with Alan. He'll be at the emergency meeting coming up here in November, so. Well, let's wait and see what Alan wants, how he wants to do, I think he needs to make sure it happens. Lisa, you have something you want to add?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. McCann, and a couple of questions for Ms. Vaughn. First question, did the county commission contract with the county surveyor, Chris Terry, to survey the county for extra pay prior to hiring Joe Vaughn?
Well, he's not a surveyor for sure, he's an employee of nine-one-one.
Is he not?
Technology-type person.
He's not a surveyor?
No.
Because I know his name appeared on the map, the BASS maps at times, and so.
Well, we asked him to look at those because he's got access to GPS, nine-one-one.
Okay, but he was not hired by the county commission to be a surveyor?
We asked him.
Or to ask him to do extra duties?
I think we did ask him to use a map card, yes.
He's mapping service.
Just as a technology person.
As a job duty or as an extra contract?
Yeah, I think it was an extra.
Okay. Okay. Now, my next question is, who made the decision after Joe Vaughn gave the maps for the county public review? Who made the decision to move the Duval line, and for what was that purpose?
It was basically a census tract, and that was my decision.
Okay, and how many people were affected by that decision?
I don't really know. I don't feel that could help us get the equal number closer.
Okay, and I guess this follows up to you, Mr. Vance, were you affected by that decision to move that line?
I understand that, well, not that that line you're talking about, but I was affected by the third scenario.
Okay. All right, and then I guess I have another question for you, Mr. Vance. What district have you continued, have you voted in since you've been a county commissioner?
I voted in Laurel Hill District, I think it is.
All elections were voted in the Laurel Hill District?
As far as I'm aware, yes.
I guess that's why a lot of people are confused, because when you first were elected, you ran in the Laurel Hill, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, all of a sudden, several years ago, you were found to be living in the Duval District, is that correct?
That, that was brought to my attention during the last primary, right before the last primary election.
So, now with these changes, you're going to be in the Laurel Hill slash Hartz District?
Whatever that number is.
Number two, or?
Two. I, I think that's the way it is.
District two.
I'll be in the same district as Mr. Ramey is.
Okay. So, my next question's for Ms. Vaughn. Since two thousand and eight, these errors about BASS maps, the Census Bureau, all of that's been publicly brought to the public, to the county commission. And as Doc Vance said, at one point in time, he actually made a motion to look into this, and nobody would second the motion. So, I'm asking, Ms. Vaughn, what does the BASS report say for the Lincoln County for the past, since nineteen eighty-six? Because when I went to your office, you showed me what you had, and it was an empty file. And then when I contacted BASS, every thing that had been sent in since nineteen eighty-six, and it's been verified by various people in the county, not one specific person, Alan Holder, Chris Terry, Charles McCann, and every single one of them said, no changes. So, I guess that leads to my next question. So, when you have errors in the system like that, how much funding may have been lost to these districts for infrastructure, for various projects, and how many elections may have been truly affected?
I'm really not in a position to answer that question. I'm really not in a position to answer those questions, because, like I say, the BASS, where that is concerned, is directly between the county and the federal government, which I do not work for. The only thing is, is the, whatever is reported to the federal government is on my maps.
Is on your map.
Is on my maps, as they, as they have said has been reported to them. So, whatever's showing on the federal maps currently, right now, the federal tiger maps, is as of the last report that they had received supposedly from the county, showing how things are.
And prior to that, the BASS maps, no changes, is that correct?
I don't know, because I don't get those reports, so I don't know when the BASSes, BASS are turning into, because they were, at that time, Detroit was our geographic department, you know, for BASS, for West Virginia. Of course, the federal government is downsizing now, so we're no longer out of Detroit, we're going to be out of Philadelphia, that's where the BASS will be coming from. But I have no, I have no relationship with them. The only thing is I get the results of what have turned in as like maps. But again, those maps are only done once every ten years. So, anything that's done between the interim, between census?
Yes.
Is between the counties and the state and the federal government.
I brought those maps to the county commission from Marty Byrne, from BASS, and every one of them, and I had them here for all of y'all to see, every one of them sitting, no changes.
Except there's some counties in the state that haven't updated their mapping in sixty years.
I don't care about the other counties, I care about the Lincoln County.
That's why we fixed the problem in Lincoln County, and I'll go ahead on record and say that the number of magisterial districts does not impact the amount of federal funding that comes into a county. If it did, then you would be saying that Canawha County, which has four districts, receives less because Lincoln has six, we receive more. Has nothing to do with the number of districts. What it has to do with the real numbers and population. That's where the money comes into Lincoln County from.
And the other answer, the other answer was, is Joe didn't want to answer, because it's not her business really, but zero, we lost zero as far as what your question was.
And, and again, I know Lisa and others have the records from the county clerk's office that depict clearly the process that was taking place during the eighties that changed the number of magisterial districts. Was not updated, the federal system, federal BASS mapping system with the new mapping, but everything was done based on the law. And if you read the record, or go to the county clerk's office and look at the records, they're in Donald's office.
Well, and, you know, I always appreciate public's concerns. Doesn't mean I agree with them all, but I appreciate it, because it brings up something new. But, history is history, and we, you know, when we got into this thing, one of the reasons that I took the responsibility so serious is because of all this stuff that happened in the past, maybe didn't happen with all the proper dotting the i's and crossing the t's, but when we're through with this, I can assure you, it will be for this year, two thousand and ten, eleven. And that's, that's all we can do, we can't change history, but we can certainly make sure the future is correct. And that's, that's my job. Anything else from the public? Yes?
I'd like to thank the county commission for sponsoring the next Drug Take That Day, Description Drug Take That Day, which is coming up on the twenty-ninth of this month. Three locations, one is the Hartz Veterans Community Center, and one is, of course, the McCorkle Community Center, and here at the Henry Workhouse. So, from ten AM to two PM on the Saturday, the twenty-ninth. We welcome everyone's contributions to help make this a successful event.
We appreciate you all doing it. Is this the second or the third?
This is actually officially the third one.
Appreciate it. Yes?
First of all, I'd like to thank the commission for helping the West Hamlin Elementary over there for their book drive and stuff. I've got a grandbaby over now, and she's receiving a lot of benefits of that, and it's really nice that you all do that. And I'd like to say that I reviewed all that, all those, the three and five, and you did a good job on getting that close as you did, the way you did. I was a committeeman here in the county for probably twenty years or longer, and it's, it's been, it's been good to see you all work with Joe on this and get this right. And I'd like to say that you did a good job on it.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Before we move into commission concern, I've just been, while we've been moving through the agenda here, public inputs and all those things, I don't want to do anything that might jeopardize or cause us to have a problem with this redistricting. So, I'm going to ask that we go back to that item on the agenda under old business and entertain a motion, redistricting of the magisterial districts, Plan Three, and the voting precincts to sixteen, as we have discussed and have public review on. Is there a motion to adopt that?
Do you, do you think we should make a motion to rescind the motion?
Maybe, maybe so.
I, I move to rescind the motion I made in regards to the magisterial district changes.
And motion second to rescind the action on the redistricting of the magisterial district, voting precincts, and executive committee. All yes vote, motion carries.
Mr. McCann, what does all of that mean, real quick?
Shortly.
And I would like to make a motion on the redistricting of the magisterial districts and voting precincts. Guess we're going to leave the executive committees off at this point. So, just the magisterial and voting precincts. So moved.
Is your second? I'll second that. Call for a vote? All yes? Mr. Vance, no? Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
I vote yes, the motion carries. I hope that helps clarify things. The reason is that I just felt like it, with the question that I didn't anticipate, I didn't think it was the issue really, I was just trying to keep everybody happy, that Mr. Priest's question for that was germane to this issue, since we had no public review. And more, I sit here and thought about, well, let's don't do anything that might cloud this redistricting plan and the precinct plan. So, now I think it's clear, like, once something else is due, let me know, as long as I don't have to back in my truck, but I've redone something many times.
I'll get with you guys, I'll be back in the office tomorrow, and I'll call you on to see if you all like communicating with the commission.
Mr. Priestley, if you could locate that section of code, it would help us too.
You can share that with whoever would like it, exactly. Are you aware of the code he's talking about?
I haven't really looked at it, because I don't really mess with the executive districts within the county that much, because they're not really, they're not a political subdivision. So, you know, that's usually a county issue, I mean, I will, you know, I do maps, I think I actually did one just on an executive map.
And my, my thought was if the, if the, is the magisterial districts and the committee districts are two separate entities, I guess what I was hoping was that, that the Old Carroll District, far as what it used to represent, far as the magisterial, that would just still stay the same in boundaries and population, whatever, as the other. And maybe you can't do that, I'm just trying to make it simple enough for the committee people, but maybe we need to revisit and do whatever, but that was the whole idea, just trying to move on and get it set up, ready to go. Doesn't have to be even addressed this time, we, we could leave it, probably not say we're doing anything.
Exactly, because you're not, you're not dealing with anything at this point, it can be done.
Right. I'm just trying to get rid of all this stuff at one time, make sure that everybody understood where we're at and what we've done, and maybe I got too eager, I don't know.
I'd be glad to hear from your office and tell you the code.
Yeah, and Tracy may know, he's not here today, he's in training somewhere, I'd go over and ask him now, if he knows.
Well, I, I think I've reviewed that too, really, looking into these type things, having been a prior Democratic chair in the county, I've reviewed them too, so there's, there is something to that, I don't remember exactly what it is, but I, I think if we had the code in front of us, it'd make it a lot easier.
Very clear if you read the code.
And I, I will compliment the commission on rescinding the prior order that they intervened to, and then doing it this way, because I think it does clear it up, because I don't think you can have one part of an order that may not be legal, may not be enforceable, or they can do it. So, I think the commission was right, even though I don't agree with what they were doing, I think the way they did it is proper.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Sean has a question.
Could the commission issue their recommendation for trick-or-treats? Because we're inundated with, we put down Hamlin and West Hamlin, we keep getting questions, what about the rest of the counties? So, could you formally say the?
Well, I'd take input from, other parts of the county, I would assume Halloween night, but.
The same as Hamlin and West Hamlin?
And theirs from five to seven?
Five thirty to seven.
That's Monday, that's Monday, right. What about the audience, that's, you guys will fulfill the bag.
Thirty-first, five thirty to seven.
Thirty-first, that's a Monday, five thirty to seven. Let's take official for motion.
I'm a second.
And motion second, declaring Lincoln County a trick-or-treat, Monday the thirty-first, five thirty to seven, trick-or-treat. Yes?
I've got a quick question from Mr. Witten.
And I'm sure WSAD put that on the table, so.
Uh, Mr. Witten, when all these
Mr. Witten, when all these changes come down, will you please mail me the changes with the precincts and rules and whatever else changes whenever, you know, the new rules come into place? Because I don't always get those things, so.
You're going to send them to everybody in the county or just to her?
Well, I'm the.
Well, she needs different.
Well, I assume he would address all of the committee people. She would.
I'd like to have a copy of that, too.
I'm the Republican chair, so that's why.
This is Kim Toppings, Mr. Witten's office.
I'd like to start out with saying that October the fourth, two thousand and eleven, governor election is done and has been certified. We in the county clerk's office think that the election went very smooth this time, and one of the reasons I think that it went so smooth is because we broke the trainings up for the poll workers by districts, and that gave us smaller classes to where we could do hands-on things with the poll workers. I would really like to say that Christie done a wonderful job with these trainings. I mean, she really knew what she was talking about. I also heard quite a few of the poll workers go up to Christie and say, the hands-on training was better than the movie that the Secretary of State's office provides us. So I think she done really good. We are.
With the video here, the video was also shown.
Yeah, the video was also shown, but they did make a comment to Christie that, that she, that she didn't really good. I'd also like to say that we are pleased that the county commission adopted Plan Three. In the county clerk's office, the ones that do voters' registration, it will help us identify where people should go in their precinct. It's just spread out all over, and we get calls coming in saying, you know, I should be closer to this area or that area. I think it'll help us determine where to put voters now with the least amount of precincts. The Secretary of State's office will be contacting us. I don't know if they're going to send someone out or, you know, train us on how to do it, on how to get the system, the new voters' registration system done, not just in Lincoln County, but other counties in the state of West Virginia that's doing the redistricting. We also have our people ready to go out in the field, going door-to-door to let the voters know about the precinct changes. We've also got people ready to send out letters to voters, to tell them about their precinct changes. We've got all the supplies needed, we've ordered all of our supplies, so the county clerk's office is ready to go with the changes.
It'll be a big job.
Yes, it is.
In salaries.
Yeah.
Anybody have questions for Kim?
I just want to thank you all, and I thank Christie at the training. She's done a wonderful job, she's done a wonderful job getting the voters' records looks more in order, and, you know, y'all done good. What's this, I wasn't understanding, the door-to-door you're going to be doing?
Well, some of the precincts have changed totally, so we are sending people door-to-door to go out in the field.
People of both political affiliations.
Not sure that it will. Not sure yet, we ain't got that far in it yet, but we are going to be hiring people to go out in the field to tell them about their precinct changes.
And what people could get new registration.
Yes, we've already got all of our supplies ordered to do this, but the Secretary of State's office is going to have to re-change the whole computer system with the new precincts and all that.
Well, that might be a good tie to the, what Mr. Webb was talking about, about that nine-one-one plan, if you're going to do a mass mailing to everyone, save money. So.
That would be with Allen, I don't.
Well, I mean, I would say there may be a coordination if we could do it together and save what you mail, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Under commission's concern, Mr. Vane?
I don't have any.
The only thing I have, I have three events I've had, was here for the employee appreciation lunch, and I know some of the employees in the audience that took part in that, they had a really good lunch. Following day, we brought in volunteers from across the county, the fire departments, crowd watches, volunteer boards, and we had the first annual volunteer appreciation lunch and was well attended. I think we had probably five or ten fire trucks here. And attended the special EDA meeting with Larry and Gary McAllister and the board and working to try to make sure that we land the new state police bearings, since it's been a slow couple weeks.
I think I worked hard this time. There's been a lot of little things going on. During the first week of October, we decided to do the special luncheon thing for the people that work so hard at the courthouse, doing their job, hard to do, but also in doing that, we wanted to celebrate the healthy county program that Dr. Smith's basically initiated a year ago, so trying to encourage people to either quit smoking, eat better, or eat less, or those things may be, and we were able to do that, celebrate that, get the luncheon the other day, providing particularly two or three employees with little rewards to encourage others, and I believe that a spin-off of that is that we, as a commission, should get with Dr. Smith and come up with a new plan for this coming year. I've heard several remarks that the Lincoln Primary Care Health Center out there, they really appreciated having the waiver by Brian Chris to let him come out and use that facility. So with those remarks, one of the things I made mental note of is maybe as we approach our new year, that we contact Brian and see what it would cost to give all the people who work in the courthouse a pass for a year to participate in the exercise room and those things out at the center. So, and for those things people made, you know, I still think that we have good employees, but they're, they're killing themselves, literally, by this smoking. We have to keep fighting that. It's bad for the whole county, it's not good, and we should set that in place. Later in the day, October the seventh, I was able to participate in the ED, with EDA Director Larry Stutler, and we heard a while ago, out with the state police and Allen Holder, looking at the possibility of bringing the state police into the county, and from there, Larry followed up with his board, as mentioned earlier. On Saturday, October the eighth, the luncheon was provided on the tent across the street for all those people who, as I put it down here, are, makes the county safer, cleaner, more enjoyable, and a nice place to work, live, and play. I just feel like it, those people are, are just, want to do anything they can, and many of you all sitting here are part of those people. To make this county a better place, make your community a better place, and so we just felt like, let's bring them together, and as Thomas mentioned, the first, let's not let it be the last, let's continue to plan and develop things of this nature to help those people who step up and get the job done. On Sunday, October the ninth, if you've never participated in the breast cancer awareness, or somebody in your family hasn't went through that, it is worth the time. I hadn't done one for a long time, and I decided to join many others out there on the afternoon of the ninth, and did the walk. I didn't do as many laps as everybody else, but I did do four or five, but it was just one of those things that you see people, that you hadn't seen in a while, and you might not even know that they've had illnesses in their family and things, but, but what you see is, you see people with such a sincere heart, devoted for one thing, let's make this cancer a history, let's figure out some way to make it so that we can cure it and make people healthier. Of course, the commission had donated some money to that, and I did deliver that check that day. On October the tenth, traveled over to Hurricane, over on Route sixty to Baker Equipment with Keith Johnson, another one of our volunteers, and we took a truck over to get a snowplow because Mr. Johnson has been using a full wheel to try to clean our parking lots, but when the community service bought their new truck, I requested we keep the old one for the purpose of putting a snowplow on it so we can clean parking lots and things like that. So we did go over there and get that done, and then Mr. Niffel and Mr. Johnson went over a few days later and picked up the truck, and so we do have a truck now with a snowplow, and hopefully we keep the parking lots cleaner. Have to call Mr. Johnson about five in the morning, probably, get him out of bed or something. He, he has volunteered to do that for a number of years. Also, on October the twelfth, we had our Board of Directors meeting, Tribe Group of Transits, meeting to leave a facility at nine o'clock when we have our meetings, and the encouraging part of it is that we continue to see a growth in the number of people who are being transported. And also, we're ready to open two new routes in Logan County, in the Mayan and Omar. They've been trying to get it for years, even when Mr. Stutler was on the board, they used to come and request in Mayan particularly, and we finally got to the point where that we are able, will be able to do that. Participated in the canvas of the special election, that was held on October the fourth. This canvas was sort of easy, but still takes, going through all the steps to make it happen, but you just got to couple three candidates, not too hard. The last thing that happened this, during this past time, was on October the eighteenth, this past Tuesday, the EMS board, I serve on the ambulance authority board, and we have a big agenda, seems like all the time, this week, we talk too much, it lasted two and a half hours, but there were one item on there that I really have requested the director to provide me with, I call it speaking points, but we had an issue that we had to adopt a policy on this past week, and basically what it comes down to is, as I understand it, you know, it's really two serious levels of, that the ambulance providers have to do, and, and one of them is basic, the BLS, and then the other is more critical. Well, it seems like that we have people in our county that are using the ambulances to sort of like doctor shop, maybe pill shop, I don't know, but we've adopted a policy, basically for one month, see how it works with the people out there on the trucks, giving them authority to make decisions as to whether they should refuse somebody that's wanting to, say, go to the hospital, emergency room, that they don't think they really need to, that they're saying, yeah, I want to go. Well, what happens is, as I understand it, is that many times that may tie up a vehicle or truck, and you get a call in, actually sent somebody on a less emergency, and you need the truck for somebody with a serious heart problem, whatever. So they have been looking at this for some time, the staff out there, and they asked us in the board, and, you know, I was really a little concerned because we have professional people out there with the EMS that can make decisions, they've been properly trained, but still, it's hard to say, when do you take an ambulance and say, well, we'll do basic, we'll do this or that, but we're not going to put you in a, a ambulance that needs to be, where you've got heart monitors and all the things that would bring people back to life and those kind of things, and use that truck, when it shouldn't have been something else. And so Trish asked us, the director, Trish Watson, to adopt a policy, basically stating that, and so I think with what limited knowledge I have, I'm sure Dr. Mason explained much better, but Trish was concerned that we're, you know, overtaxing our valuable ambulance service to people who may not need it as much as some others, and so maybe it might be helpful, so I don't want to get the information out improperly, but maybe Sean could contact Trish and get her the statement, because I really wanted one to read here, because I just felt like it was, it was, it bothered me a little bit to think that people would do that, but it also bothered me that we'd have to tell some people that, somebody's got to make a decision, are we going to run an ambulance to this cause, or we're going to do it for something else? And so since we put money into that by way of a levy, I thought that the public needs to be well aware of what's, what's going on and why certain decisions are made.
Trust me, do we still have the Appalachian Emergency Medical Board services that the same Southern Emergency Medical Services, we work under, train paramedics that they do that?
They, they work with Southern, and they, they're actually have trained, they've got some trainers out there that do the training.
Because they are, there's a particular set of rules, I know back when I was working at the ambulance authority, that we had to, as far as picking up and not picking up people, and there's no doubt this is misused, I mean, there's, this definitely happens, but what we've got to really watch and really be careful of is that we don't not transport somebody that's going to die. And, and these EMTs and paramedics do have a degree of background, some of them are much better than others because they get more experience and things like that, and there's like a lot, when I talk to them, if it's particular ones, I can, the validity of what they're saying, I take with a higher degree than some of the other ones. So as you go through this process, I want you to make sure that, you know, you're going to have to document everyone that you turn down, there may even be some laws associated with entalae that you might have to look at, which is transferring patients from one spec place to the other, and not, not transferring them down in, in medical coverage and taking them to the right place, so I think that needs to really be looked into, because you, you know, you hate, you know, you hate to take ten persons that don't need to go, but the one that needs to go, you hate to put that on the backs of a paramedic or an EMT to decide that, so it's a real, real scary situation to do that, and I know you're aware of that too, so as you go through that process, there may be, you know, there may be other things documented that says you handle this, this way, and some of the emergency centers may have more information on that, so it might help to consult. Of course, I know Trish is up on what's going on, I think, so, but, you know, you just don't want that one to be turned away and then something bad happens to them, because it's really putting so much of a burden on that responder to decide whether that patient needs to be taken or not, and, and I would caution that they always, you know, err, and which I'm sure they do always err in the safety's sake as far as that patient's concerned. But, you know, when, when I worked Logan Emergency Room, we had plenty of these people that were coming in and coming in and didn't have pain pills, or didn't have whatever, and it really is a burden on the whole system, and I don't think that, I'm not sure that us locally, if we don't need to look at it from a state level and say, you know, but how do you handle these type things at other levels and things like that, because you really don't want to put, just like I don't put more on my nurses than I have to, because their, their decision-making's based at a certain level. Same thing when you go out to these people's homes, and you don't know what goes on around them and things like that, sometimes the responders are scared about what may happen to them when they get into an area, things like that, but I think as long as you watch and document the ones you're turning down, make sure that if there is a bad consequence, we document that too, but it might be something that we need to look into at, at state level and see if they have a protocol that they follow and that we can document.
And I think Trish may show up at a meeting, but on short notice, she was supposed to give me some pointers, make sure I didn't misstate something. I hope I didn't.
That's all.
Anything else? Yes?
One other thing that I hear all over this county is about accidents occurring, and when the law shows up and the people are obviously intoxicated, on pills, or whatever, that oftentimes here in Lincoln County, the sheriff's department does not want to escort them to the hospital, so therefore charges could be pressed, and they're just turned loose. And these people often are on drugs, have no license, have no insurance, have no registration or anything, and the people that they usually hit are citizens with those things. So I guess I'm voicing my concern about the sheriff's department, or whoever's responsible for that, that they are letting too many people out of accidents by not wanting to escort them to the hospital, I mean, so they can't press charges. And who suffers? It's the innocent people, all of us, who pay insurance and tax rates in this county. So I'm just wanting somebody to ask the sheriff's department to follow through with the mission of their jobs.
And the state police.
Well, you know, and the state police too, but I hear this more about the Sheriff's Department than I do the state police, but I don't know if it occurs there either, so. But I've heard this in all areas of this county, and it specifically relates to people who are on drugs.
Serious issue, for sure.
It's a very serious issue. And innocent people are the ones who suffer and get injured and killed.
Okay. Keep the most to do, we've done all right.
I'd like to answer her questions. I'm October with the Sheriff's Department. I believe if you would look at the status, that the Sheriff's Department probably doesn't investigate over three to four wrecks per month. And the procedure you go through if somebody's hurt is they summon the drug test. They don't have to go to the hospital. Only time that you go to the hospital is if you think that subject is going to die. Okay? I used to be a deputy here in this county, so with all the hell that work. But I personally think you're giving the Sheriff's Department a bad eye.
I just reported on what people have told me.
But really, you need to get the stats on how many accidents they're investigating per month, how many then per month is going to the hospital? I mean, you thought it out there like it's, let's just say twenty a month or something. It's not happening that way.
We don't know, it's not documented.
All you got to do, I'm sure, is go ask and find out.
When you have your volunteer fire departments telling you that they've responded to so many accidents and the law comes and the people are drugged out of their mind and nobody goes to take them, I mean, nobody prosecutes them. I know for a fact, my friend was hit on Mud River Road and the man had no insurance, no driver's license, he was highly intoxicated, tried to leave the scene of an accident, police showed up, he was airlifted to Huntington, and no fall through ever occurred. And she was never, never given any information about the person who hit her.
Was that near state police?
That was a deputy.
When that happened?
So that's been several years ago, but since then, in the past, I mean, like two years ago. So since then, in the past, I hear this where I travel the county, and it's a cost to complain. It's specifically a cost to complain in the Harps area where I live.
Okay. Last, last meeting, you said you didn't have no deputies up there.
We don't. And when they do come for an accident, that's what the complaint is.
You got one that lives over at that community center that is off-hard right now.
Well, I didn't know who's off-hard. I mean, I'm sure the local authorities.
You guys should take this out of the park.
All I got to say is, if she's so involved in the community of Harps, she ought to know that.
I agree. Don't say he makes some points, but.
I know there's somebody that lives there, have I met?
I'm not going to. Either that or move.
He's talking?
I didn't, I'm talking to you.
I was talking to you.
You want to go outside, you want. You're disturbing the meeting, and I'm going to call it that.
I was asking you a question.
No, I'm asking you to be quiet. Be quiet. We have a motion adjourned until November the third, six o'clock. We also have a meeting November seventeenth, and also Thanksgiving dinner.